We are recording.
Thank you very much again to everyone who has joined us today this morning. It is June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is nine thirty-three AM, and I am Teresa Mosqueta, Chair of the Finance and Housing Committee. Madam Clerk, will you please call the rule?
Councilmember Herbold.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Mosqueta.
Present.
Madam Chair, there is five present, none excused or absent.
Thank you very much. And Madam Clerk, I want to thank you as well as the team from the Clerk's Office, the IT support team, Seattle Channel, and our security folks who've continued to make this a safe place for gathering here today. We do have many folks who are signed up for public testimony online and also want to make sure that we get through our full agenda. We have a number of presenters, so I want to make sure that we get a chance to hear from them and the opportunity to go through our entire agenda. I'll just outline it for you so that you have a sense of what it is. If there's any objection, we'll make sure to take those. Today, we have the appointment of Cara Valier as member of the Housing Levy Oversight Committee. We'll have legislation from the Office of Housing that proposes modifications to the housing funding policies to create a new Jumpstart Acquisition and Preservation Fund, or what we're calling the Jumpstart Community Self-Directed Housing Fund. Don't worry, we'll work on the title, folks. It's going to get even better. In that piece of legislation, this is funding from Jumpstart, which will help to make sure that the city has different eligibility criteria for a specific pot of funds intended to be available for smaller organizations who are interested in developing affordable housing. The intent is to make sure that the city's equitable development goals are being met by investing in organizations and projects that are working to address displacement and redress the longstanding harms of discriminatory housing policies. And the last two items on our agenda include the Royal Brom property. This is property by the city, given to the city by the State of Washington Department of Transportation near I-5 and the I-90 interchange. We're excited to also, lastly, have on our agenda here today the HSD executive agreement with a funding agency to make sure that we accept grants to enable HSD to move forward on specific programs that have already received the appropriate budget authority. If there's no objection for those four items, today's agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, today's agenda is adopted. Madam Chair, excuse me, Madam Clerk, do we have a video today to explain public comment? Okay, wonderful. I want to thank Council President Juarez, who has been working to create a video for us to share with the community as we move into this hybrid world of public comment and continue to ensure everyone's public safety. So, Madam Clerk, if you could go ahead and tee that up, that'd be great.
Hello, Seattle. We are the Emerald City, the city of flowers and the city of goodwill, built on indigenous land, the traditional territory of the Coast State's peoples. The Seattle City Council welcomes remote public comment and is eager to hear from residents of our city. If you would like to be a speaker and provide a verbal public comment, you may register two hours prior to the meeting via the Seattle City Council website. Here's some information about the public comment proceedings. Speakers are called upon in the order at which they registered on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number provided when they registered online and use the meeting ID and passcode that was emailed upon confirmation. If you did not receive an email confirmation, please check your spam or junk mail folders. A reminder, the speaker meeting ID is different from the general listen line meeting ID provided on the agenda. Once a speaker's name is called, the speaker's microphone will be unmuted and an automatic prompt will say, "The host would like you to unmute your microphone." That is your cue that it's your turn to speak. At that time, you must press star six. You will then hear a prompt of, "You are unmuted." Be sure your phone is unmuted on your end so that you will be heard. As a speaker, you should begin by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. A chime will sound when ten seconds are left in your allotted time, as a gentle reminder to wrap up your public comments. At the end of the allotted time, your microphone will be muted, and the next speaker registered will be called. Once speakers have completed providing public comment, please disconnect from the public comment line and join us by following the meeting via Seattle Channel Broadcast or through the listening line option listed on the agenda. The council reserves the right to eliminate public comment if the system is being abused, or if the process impedes the council's ability to conduct its business on behalf of residents of the city. Any offensive language that is disruptive to these proceedings, or that is not focused on an appropriate topic as specified in council rules, may lead to the speaker being muted by the presiding officer. Our hope is to provide an opportunity for productive discussions that will assist our orderly consideration of issues before the council. The public comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Please remember to press star six after you hear the prompt of, "You have been unmuted." Thank you, Seattle.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. And I do want to just remind folks that we're going to continue to have remote public comment today and until further notice, we are asking all presenters who are coming to the Finance and Housing Committee meeting to continue to present remotely. So, we appreciate the large group of folks who are with us here on the line remotely today. Due to the Open Public Meetings Act, chamber doors are open to the public to view the committee meetings and provide public comment, though we are strongly encouraging people to continue to dial in to provide that public comment. Public comment virtually will make sure that we folks are able to provide their remarks and also limit the amount of people who are in chambers to ensure everyone's public health. With that, the first person that we have to provide remote public comment is Agnes Navarro. Good morning, Agnes. You are welcome to begin your public comment as soon as we get you off mute, and we will give you two minutes. Go ahead, Miss Navarro.
Yes. Good morning, everyone. My name is Agnes Navarro. I'm the Executive Director for the Filipino Community of Seattle, Chair Teresa Mosqueta, and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on PB 120343, the Jumpstart Community Focus Acquisition Fund Legislation. The Filipino Community of Seattle is a nonprofit, community-based organization. We know what our community needs when it comes to housing. Our first housing project, called the Filipino Community Village, was an affordable housing for seniors, which we just celebrated our grand opening. It took us ten years to build it because of the roadblocks we had to harden. It took some time to find a developer that would work with us and believe in our vision of building a multi-generational project. We did not only build the housing, but also an innovation learning center that integrates all age groups. With you, Councilmember Mosqueta, initiating Jumpstart and proposing this ordinance, it will make it easier for our organization to build our second affordable housing, this time for working families with Child Development Center. With the rising cost of housing and rental in Seattle, our project will prevent displacement of our BIPA community who works in Seattle and avail of our services. Through Jumpstart, we want to thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta, because you found a way to fund the land acquisition for our next project. This legislation will enable small community-based organizations to build affordable housing because it removes barriers to land acquisition. Thank you so much.
And all that you have accomplished for the ninety-four units of affordable housing that you've created for elders and the childcare facilities and education facilities on the first floor. That was wonderful to be with you last Thursday, and thank you for dialing in again today. Ten years is how long it took to get the funding, and we know that it was decades longer that you were working on the vision. So, thanks for dialing in today. Just confirming that is the last person signed up for public. Thank you. That's the last person I see online for public comments, so we will go ahead and move into the room. And I will call one person at a time to make sure that there's no lineup. Today, we don't have that concern because there's just one person here to provide public comment. And I'm asking for folks to use that microphone. This one, again, does not work. We're going to use that one over there. Alex Zimmerman, you are the only person signed up in the room. Please go ahead.
Oh, so where is my face?
Please begin. Your time started. No one has a face.
I cannot see my face. I cannot see my sign. You low David, I'm here. I'm confused.
The clock is ticking, Mr. Zimmerman.
Okay, no problem. Thank you very much. No problem. Zihai, my dirty, damn Nazi fascist mob bandito and psychopath. My name, Alex Zimmerman, and I want to speak about Agenda Number Two, about housing. Thank you very much, my lovely council. You did very good job with housing for poor people in exactly chair. You did something, but it's probably nothing happened for last five or six year under your supervision, you know what I mean, together with Amazon Mafia. You raised prices for last few year double, and in this year, it's been another ten percent, almost two hundred bucks. So, you're doing very good job. You super, you know what I mean, you are best of the best. And I told you before, you move everybody out, all poor, all... I don't know. Who's low-income, color people, all from city. A city will be controlled by Amazon Mafia with salary three hundred thousand dollars, and your mafia, Democratic Mafia, with hundred fifty thousand dollar salary. So, what is can doing for poor people like me? I'm senior citizen, low-income. I need move from Seattle after thirty-five year, what is I live, and how about another ten of ten thousand people, what is you did for your very good job. So, right now, Seattle, the only people for aristocrat, you know what I mean? American aristocrat. Where is this come, this aristocrat? From Mexico? No? From who? From another city? Thank you very much. Stand up, Americans. Stand up, people, for cleanse the door each.
At this time, it doesn't look like there's anybody else signed up to provide public comment, so that will conclude today's public comment. Madam Clerk, I think you can go ahead and read item number one into the record.
Agenda item number one, appointment of Cara Kadoshima Valier as member of the Housing Levy Oversight Committee for briefing discussion and possible vote.
Wonderful. Thank you. And for folks on the Seattle Channel, just let us know if there's any concern with hearing the clerk. I can hear you, Madam Clerk. I just want to make sure other people can too. Okay, we have agenda item number one in front of us. This is the opportunity to appoint, let's see, Cara Valier to the Office of Housing's Housing Levy Oversight Committee. I want to thank Cara and also Kelly Larson from the Office of Housing for being here today. Congratulations, Cara, on the new role within the mayor's office. We appreciate your service previously here in the Legislative Department with Councilmember Peterson, who is to my left. We are very excited to be working with you on housing policy. There is really nothing more central to how we create a more equitable and safe and healthy community than making sure everyone has housing. And with the Housing Levy Renewal on the horizon next year in November, two thousand and twenty-three, this is a very important role. Very excited to have you with us, so I will turn it over to Kelly for an introduction, and then we are going to be happy to consider any questions from the committee here today. Good morning, Kelly.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. Thank you. We're very excited about the appointment today of Cara Kadoshima Valier. The Seattle Housing Levy established an oversight committee to track levy progress and outcomes and to ensure proper stewardship of this critical resource in our community. As the OH team works to produce and preserve affordable housing and homeownership opportunities in Seattle, this oversight committee is asked to provide feedback on the ongoing administration of levy programs. We ask folks to review our OH and Housing Levy progress in meeting our goals, and we're very excited to be introducing Cara Valier today as our newest appointee. So, Cara is proposed as the mayoral appointee to the Housing Levy Oversight Committee. She's working on issues around homelessness and housing and has been working with our office through this new administration so far this year. We've had a great working relationship so far, and we support this appointment.
Wonderful, and welcome, Cara.
Thank you. I can tell.
Yeah, please, please feel free to introduce yourself, and then we, of course, would love to ask you some questions afterwards, but as you introduce yourself, if you can talk a little bit about your biggest priorities, any issues that you'd like to highlight that really drive you in this position as you consider your role on the Housing Levy Oversight Committee.
Okay. Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for having me here today. A little about my background. My name is Cara Kadoshima Valier. I grew up in South Seattle, and I'm the parent of two fourth-generation Seattleites. I attended the University of Washington and then UCLA for my master's in public policy. Cumulatively now, I've reached seven years at the city, both in the city attorney's office and in the Legislative Department, as you mentioned, and now the mayor's office since March. I've worked in and served on boards of organizations dealing with housing and land use permitting, zoning, regulation, and compliance in government, private, and nonprofit sectors, including handling matters before the California Coastal Commission, assisting in preservation and nonprofit housing efforts at the Little Tokyo Service Center, and supporting equity and access at the Los Angeles League of Conservation Voters. My position now, since joining Mayor Harold's team, I've served as mayoral assistant for special projects where I've managed policy development on issues relating to housing and homelessness. And it's in that role that I'm representing his administration in this position as previous liaisons and previous levy oversight roles have done. I'm really excited about being, having this opportunity to be on the Housing Levy Oversight Committee to do work that bolsters the faith in local government. Past levy results have demonstrated wise use of resources, leveraging and resources and acquiring property, and maximizing our opportunities to provide affordable housing and secure homeownership. So, thank you for your consideration and for having me here today.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for, thank you very much for your interest in this. I'm looking already at Councilmember Peterson because I'm guessing he might have some comments. So, Councilmember Peterson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. Briefly, I just want to say I fully support the Harold Administration's nomination. As you can see from the appointment packet on the agenda, the nominee has an impressive resume that should serve the Harold Administration well. The oversight role of monitoring Seattle's longstanding property tax levy for low-income housing is vital to make sure we maximize taxpayer investments, especially as we're striving to provide as much long-term housing as possible as quickly as possible. The seven-year housing levy averages, I believe, about forty million dollars per year, and understanding the interface between those funds and the additional millions of dollars from the mandatory housing affordability program is vital for success. On a related note, very pleased Mayor Harold expand a Deputy Mayor Washington's role to include not just affordable housing, but also homelessness, because a priority should really be to get the most vulnerable people inside. And so, I believe the mayor's nominee here brings to the table that additional understanding of homelessness policy, and this includes having been there for the creation of the Tiny Home Village in District Four. This is extremely valuable, especially as the mayor remains committed to try to make available at least two thousand units of low-income housing this year. It sounds like the executive may be interested in renewing and potentially increasing this property tax in a couple of years, so it's even more important to have appointees who bring the holistic view of housing to provide the strongest oversight of this existing levy. I appreciate the commitment of all the Housing Levy Oversight Committee members and look forward to voting yes today. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Herbold, please go ahead.
Thank you, and I, too, am really excited about Cara's willingness to serve in this role. Really appreciate her.
One second. I'm getting a little bit of background. If the IT team could mute their line. Eric, if the IT team could mute the line, Eric, or if we have a co-host that could mute. Just want to give us one more second. Leg IT, if you can mute your line. Leg IT, if you can mute your line. Okay, I see they're muted. Madam Vice Chair, please go ahead.
Thank you. Just again, excited that Cara is willing to play this role on the Housing Levy Oversight Committee. Really look forward to working with her in this new capacity, and it was mentioned earlier, but I just want to, again, emphasize for the viewing public, this is a thirteen-member oversight committee, and by design, there are two individuals who represent the city, one that is appointed by the city council and one by the mayor. So, by design, we have two city employees on the oversight committee. Just want to clarify that in case anybody's wondering. Thank you so much, Cara.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair, and thanks for lifting that information up. I don't think I said it at the beginning, so I appreciate that. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, Cara, I do have one additional question for you. I'm excited that you brought up your experience with Los Angeles and the Association of Cities there. Any lessons learned, obviously, from the experience in Los Angeles tied to housing that you might be bringing to this committee? We do often look up and down the West Coast for ways that we can replicate good policy, and also we look for ways that we can maybe avoid pitfalls that other cities have had when it comes to zoning issues and the housing crisis that we're facing up and down the West Coast. Any thoughts that you'd like to bring today about how that past experience might help inform the work you have in front of us in the next year and a half here?
Sure. Well, that's a huge question, and I think it raises many, many important issues. But one of my main takeaways would be that what I've been impressed with here are the results of the previous levies in all program areas, but especially in addressing the opportunity for equity and homeownership, something that's out of reach for too many folks, but that the levy has also been focused on preventing displacement. And that is something that I think that what we've seen in California and obviously happening here, too, needs diligence and attention. And so, I'm looking forward to being part of this effort and also seeing the technical advisory committee get their subject matter expertise to really refine the proposed programs.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much again for that answer, and it does dovetail nicely with the next item on our agenda, which also not only builds housing, but helps to prevent displacement by really centering building through the eyes of those who've been most affected by displacement. So, I love the tie-in there. I'm not seeing any additional comments or questions. So, colleagues, I'd like to move the committee recommend confirmation for the appointment of Cara Valier as member of the Housing Levy Oversight Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. It has been moved and seconded. Are there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you please call the rule on the passage of the appointment?
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Madam Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Madam Chair, there is five in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much. The motion carries. Congratulations, Cara. The committee recommendation that the appointment be confirmed will be sent to the June twenty-first Seattle City Council meeting for final confirmation. Of course, you don't need to be present to win, but we will look forward to sending your praises there and will highlight the unanimous support. Wonderful. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
Let's move, excellent. Let's move on to our second item of business. Madam Clerk, could you please call the, excuse me, can you please read into the record item number two?
Agenda item number two, Council Bill 120343, ordinance relating to housing for low-income households for briefing discussion and possible vote.
Excellent. This is the drum roll that I did yesterday. This is a really exciting moment that we collectively have been working on, both within my office over the last year and in community, and discussion through the Community Housing Roundtable, of which we have a few members here with us today. And I would say even longer, as you heard from Agnes Navarro from the Filipino Community Center, ten years it took them to get the funding compiled for the celebration that we have last Thursday for the Filipino Community Center, Community Village, serving seniors. It took our friends at El Centro, as you will hear from Miguel Mayesa, at least seven years of compiling the funding to get the Roberto Maya Plaza and the two beautiful buildings around the plaza to get the funding that was needed to begin construction. So, while it's been a year-plus of work on this policy specifically, we know that there's been decades of advocacy and organizing and lived experience that has brought us to this moment to want to update our policies. And we're going to do the following order. We're going to first welcome Michael Winkler Chin to perhaps say a few comments, and then Tracy Raskliff. We would love to have you walk us through the policy proposal in front of us. And then we're going to have a panel of folks to talk a little bit about what this policy means, and then we'll open it up for questions and consider legislation. We have with us today Michael Winkler Chin, Director of Office of Housing, Kelly Larson, Office of Housing, Tracy Raskliff, Central Staff, Miguel Mayesa from El Centro de la Raza, Jamie Lee from Skip the PDA, and a team from the Filipino Community Center, Agnes Navarro, who you heard from earlier, Rick Palatini, and Velma Valoria, former Representative Velma Valoria. Our folks, our friends from the Africa Town Community Center were going to be joining us today but are currently on a delayed flight, so we greatly appreciate their interest in this policy. And if they are able to land before we finish this item, we'll make sure to include them, but I wanted to note our appreciation for their interest in joining us this morning. With that, why don't I turn it over to Director Winkler Chin, and then we will turn it over to Tracy Raskliff.
Good morning, councilmembers. Kelly, are we starting the slide deck now?
Should we do that, Tracy?
Would you like, Tracy?
I was just going to ask Tracy, do you want to say some opening comments? You're welcome to.
Do you want us to start? And you start. Sorry, councilmembers, this is the first time I've ever actually had to do this.
Oh, yes. Well, we did confirm you yesterday, so we expect, no, I'm just kidding. No, no, no problem, Director Winkler Chin. You know, usually I think I do go to Central Staff first, so Tracy, if you have anything you'd like to share with us before we take the presentation, you're welcome to.
I would just briefly tee up this proposal. This legislation does come from, again, a lot of work that you have done with your community partners over the, actually, more than, I think, just a year. It feels like just a year, but it's been longer, trying to address this need for accessing funding to do acquisitions of land and/or buildings in areas at risk of displacement. So, we actually drafted a slide as part of the budget in two thousand and twenty-two that requested the Office of Housing to look at this issue and to come back with proposed legislation that would address this ongoing need for accessing funding for these types of acquisitions by the smaller and newer community-based organizations. And so, OH has provided the appropriate slide response, and with it, the proposed legislation that is in front of you, and I think I will have them walk through, and then if there are questions of me or of them, we can entertain those after their presentation.
Thank you very much. And as we tee this up, I just also want to thank Anne House, who's been working with us on this policy for the last few years. Tracy Raskliff, as well, has joined all of those Community Housing Roundtable discussions, so thank you, Tracy, for being there from a technical assistance and central staff position. Again, this is also thanks to you, colleagues, for your support for Jumpstart Progressive Revenue and the unanimous support for the implementation plan. Jumpstart did put funding in for acquisition. It put funding forward for housing funding policies. As we all know, sixty-two percent of the funding does go to affordable housing. However, and for the folks from IT, if you could tee it up so the presenter and the slides are showing at the same time. However, we wanted to make sure that we really listened to the community who had designed with us the spend plan, and part of the priorities from the community and from council members was to make sure that there was permanent acquisition funding, along with capacity building and technical assistance, so that organizations were able to both secure land quickly and develop the community-driven housing more quickly. And making sure that there was full ownership and self-determination became more and more of the emphasis as we heard from community partners. The legislation is a result of many of those conversations with the Roundtable, community-based organizations, organizations who have begun to enter into building more affordable housing, and many of those organizations are with us here today. So, I just wanted to provide some context about where this really came from, and that this is, as I mentioned yesterday, much more than just the housing. These investments create social cohesion and opportunity for community engagement. They help with the social determinants of health by making sure people have community gathering spaces. They help by creating economic opportunities, by creating small business and training opportunities, and they help with opportunities for creating. And they help with opportunities for creating more self-determination for community members, such as youth and elders who might be facing social isolation, especially in the wake of COVID. This is a really exciting opportunity for us to meld together, not just funding for housing units and not just building more affordable housing, but doing so through the vein and through the lens of communities most affected by displacement and who in this moment are still most disproportionately affected by the impacts of COVID isolation and, as the Vice Chair says, the shadow pandemic. So I will turn it over to the Office of Housing to walk us through the presentation. And they may have more comments from some for some of our guests who are here with us today, but want to get into the meat of the policy.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Mosqueta. So this presentation is in response to a City Council Statement of Legislative Intent, which is stated here that will work with the City Council to develop proposed modifications to the city's funding, housing funding policies, to address many of the things that you just discussed, really, which is around policy barriers, including partnership requirements for small community-based lenders or and developers that may have had difficulty accessing the traditional acquisition and preservation loan program.
For the Seattle Channel folks, can we tee up the presentation that is being shared by Office of Housing?
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
Can we have the screen that's showing the PowerPoint presentation? We're on slide number three, and this is this is sort of the big takeaway difference between what we're currently doing and what we're adding. And I think it's a great presentation, and I want to make sure that it's being projected on Seattle Channel. Thank you, Director Winkler Chin.
Okay, I think I see it now.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, great. So the current program that we have, you have these four criteria here that are listed under current. You have to have experience developing or operating at least three buildings or partnering with an organization that has that experience. You have to have the ability to secure permanent financing and be on good standing on OH loans. If you are somebody new to this development area, you're not going to have this, really, for the most part, because you've never worked with OH. And some of these things are just unattainable to you. And that the current program is really driven by the need to have our funds come back to us because we are using levy funds, we're using housing levy funds that are designated for the twenty-year operations and maintenance support. And we were using those funds to fund this acquisition program. Those those projects then would come back within that five-year period. And the money that was originally paid for this acquisition program would then go back into the OMS dollars. And that's why this set of criteria were really, really important for that. What the Jumpstart Program allows us to do is to be more flexible on that. So these are some of the new criteria for the new program. One is to be a community-based organization or a community development corporation. Funds are prioritized for organizations who work directly with vulnerable communities, have a development plan in place within five years, right? You don't need to secure permanent financing, but have a sense of the development plan. Annual organization housing revenue to exceed eight million dollars. That is still something that we're exploring and documented. But what's really important is a documented board intent to own and operate multi-family rental and/or permanently affordable homeownership. The proposal reflects our commitment to the Race and Social Justice Initiative for reducing barriers for community-based organizations to enter the affordable housing sector, particularly for CBOs that have traditionally been excluded from the industry. We have, we are lucky here in Seattle that we have so many community-based organizations that have done a lot of things over time and really serve the community. But at a certain point, they may want to enter that affordable housing space. And there, it's a very challenging market to enter into because people start looking at balance sheet or past experience. And even though they may be longstanding organizations, decades old, and have really strong commitments to community and the work that they've done and been really, really successful, when you enter this affordable housing sector, that experience isn't valued in the same way that perhaps I would. The second proposal here, the second bullet point here is that it supports more community-driven projects to be realized and within communities living with the past and present impacts of displacement and housing discrimination. The community develop, the community-driven projects, I think if you were to look at the partners that have been funded and that we hope to partner with, really are doing the housing and work. I think Councilmember Mosqueta, that you talk about, and it's the bringing of childcare facilities, small businesses, all those things that we want to see in housing and are great elements of the community. But also, these organizations and these communities may have been restricted by the the housing discrimination that organizations such as the City of Seattle has perpetuated over time. Next slide, please. So the Jumpstart opportunity, as we've said, you know, if the current program really comes from a temporary fund source, as I've described earlier, and this new payroll expense tax creates a new and permanent source for acquisition and preservation loans. It also allows us to have technical assistance and capacity building funds to support the community, the community-based organizations. So they have some of the the thought and the and the skills necessary to make the decisions that are best for themselves outside of the financial structure that that they are forced to enter into. It allows for different eligibility criteria for loan resources and improves equitable lending practices. Because I would say some of the lending practices that exist out in the world are not necessarily all that equitable. Phase one of the Capacity and Grant Program is would allow us to work with a third-party intermediary. And we are planning on giving out two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grants for training and pre-development expenses that are tied to projects. And then phase two is Acquisition and Development Program, where organizations that complete phase one will be eligible to apply for Jumpstart A and P loans, which will be competitively awarded and reviewed through our standard OH underwriting procedures. And the organizations that are doing that will be eligible for up to five hundred thousand dollars additional developer fee to earn to support their organizational capacity and infrastructure during this time. So the Jumpstart A and P Program, if you look at the Jumpstart legislation, up to sixteen percent of available Jumpstart revenue for housing and services are are Jumpstart revenue is available for housing and services to support anti-displacement work, including acquisition and permanent development financing. Based on the current Jumpstart amount, we're estimating that to be fifteen million. And of that fifteen million, two million would be annually set aside to administer the Capacity and Grant Program. And the partner organizations, as we as we look back at who are potential partner organizations, it would be some of the organizations that are lifted here, that are listed here. And that is the end of the slide deck.
Excellent, okay, wonderful. We do have some community partners here with us today. Kelly, I just want to make sure there was anything else you wanted to add from OH? Okay, wonderful. So we're going to go ahead and hear directly from some of the folks who've been calling for this type of action for the last few years. And I want to welcome Miguel Mayesas from El Centro. And then Miguel will be followed by Jamie Lee and then the team, Velma, Agnes, and Rick from Filipino Community Center. Welcome, Miguel. Feel free to, if you don't mind, comment a little bit more. I teed up a little bit of the work that you had done for the Roberto Maya Plaza. But if you could talk, team here, our panel, could you talk a little bit about your experience in creating affordable housing? You know, maybe how your organization decided to get into this world and then the challenges you experienced securing funding at the beginning? I would love to hear a little bit more about the time, the length of time it took you to get your projects funded for the few that we're looking at as some examples. And if this Jumpstart Community Self-Determination Fund, how does that title sound? Pretty good, Jumpstart Self-Determination Fund. If it would have been in place, how do you think that might have helped you in the past or for future projects? Again, welcome Miguel.
Councilmember Mosca and members of the Finance and Housing Committee, thank you so much for the opportunity to share this morning and and talk about and support the Jumpstart Fund legislation. On behalf of everyone at El Centro de la Raza, the Center for People of All Races, we appreciate the opportunity to share about our experience with the development of Plaza Roberto Maya. You know, back in two thousand and three, when, you know, word was coming that the light rail would be coming to Beacon Hill, and actually, it wasn't supposed to come to Beacon Hill initially. But when 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 it was determined that a stop would be on Beacon Hill, obviously, El Centro, we saw, we began to learn about the opportunity to do a mixed-use affordable housing development. Many folks came to the organization wanting to purchase the land, develop the land. And we realized that we had to learn and develop our own capacity to develop property that already belonged to El Centro de la Raza as quickly as we could. We we knew that this was an opportunity to expand our ability to carry out our mission, to do our part as an organization to respond to the affordable housing crisis that was already taking hold in our community. And so we began to organize and participate in neighborhood meetings, in the the planning meetings for Beacon Hill, and really make sure that community was engaged and talking about what kind of development we wanted to bring on Beacon Hill, obviously, including affordable housing. So so it took, that was a long process, that took many, many years, probably about six years of of just participating and learning. And and finally, in two thousand and nine, when we were pretty clear about what we wanted to do, you know, and began to engage in partners and development consultants. And Plaza Roberto Maya is obviously named in honor of Roberto. Maya was part of those initial discussions and visions before he passed away in two thousand and ten. And what came, and and then finally broke ground in two thousand and sixteen. So, you know, it was an incredible, incredibly long journey and a tremendous amount of work for our organization to grow the capacity to 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 have, to to put in place and the good financial systems, the data tracking, improve our technology, so that we would be able to be competitive for the funding, to be able to do this mixed-use development. And I also want to, you know, so it was an incredible amount of work over a long period of time before really thinking about that vision to actually breaking ground in two thousand and sixteen. And I do want to share a little bit about our model because obviously, our model of affordable housing is, as Councilmember Mosca mentioned, it's it's mixed, it's a mixed use. And it really is about building community and creating a sense of community and and not doing affordable housing as a standalone, but in making sure that it's part of other elements that support community, like childcare, the small business and economic development part of the development, the community and cultural space that are part of that development, so that not only people who are going to live there and work there and 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 have their small businesses there, but the entire neighborhood and city see it as an asset and that and that that everyone sees that there's something there for them or there there's something there that really benefits the community, whether it's more businesses and and walkable amenities, like restaurants and coffee shops and the and the credit, Seattle Credit Union that's there in our development, the station coffee shop, tacos, chukis, but the cultural space, the event space, the the amenities to bring community together. And so building those aspects are also very challenging as well. So I, you know, you asked what what this what this fund or what this legislation would have meant. It would have meant, it would have been incredibly valuable to us because obviously, this was a process where we were learning and didn't have a lot of funds dedicated to this. Fortunately, we did, we were able to have some some funds that we had set aside from the construction or leasing out the space to the for the to sound transit to develop the the light rail. But, you know, tho- those funds were limited as well. So this this, we've often talked about what it means to build capacity. Many, many organizations, churches, community-based organizations have come to El Centro for to ask us about our lessons learned and what we could share because of their desire to to use land that they already have to build affordable housing. And we we always share our knowledge and share anything that we can because we we remember how hard and how long of a of a process it was for us. So we share policies, we share contacts, we, you know, as part of just supporting that. Because as we know, and and as part of this legislation, i- is there's there's many groups out there, many organizations that have their own land and and want to be part of the response to the affordable housing crisis. But this is, but but it is a capacity issue so so many times. And then the other part about raising raising the 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 funds for other elements are well, as well is is even more difficult at times than raising the funds for affordable housing. When you look at the commercial space, the child development space, the the entities that don't have that funding and a huge lift and a huge part of developing capacity, El Centro, our example, we had to do the largest capital campaign in our history to be able to pay for those commercial entities and those community and cultural spaces as well. So, you know, and we 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 know we will never do a a development that just is is affordable housing. It has to have those other parts and those other elements to really build and support community. So and finally, I'll mention that, you know, the need, it was very fortuitous that we had the land. But acquiring new land to do affordable housing for small organizations that are just, you know, have limited capacity to do affordable housing is incredibly challenging. So the support for for acquisition here is is invaluable and will really help organizations develop their capacity. So I will close by just saying that, you know, that it also strengthens organizations. And it it has helped El Centro be in a place where we know as an organization, we will be providing growing assets and providing support and housing for our community for generations to come because the organization is much stronger, much much more financially stable and has now assets that can continue to serve the community for many, many years to come. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much, Miguel. And thank you for sharing the story on behalf of El Centro. I'm so glad that you also invoked Roberto's name and the role that he had in helping to plan the plaza. So it's exciting to see how this work continues and continues to evolve based on some of that early planning that you all did together. And the the experience of El Centro is not unique, right? So I'm going to turn it over to Jamie Lee next from Skipda PDA to talk a little bit about their experience in the Chinatown International District. Welcome, Jamie.
Good morning, thank you, and thank you, councilmembers, for inviting me to be here today. As Councilmember Mosqueta said, I'm Jamie Lee, and I'm with the Seattle Chinatown International District Preservation Development Authority. We're a community development organization in the Chinatown ID. I feel like Miguel really did hit on a lot of the things that I'm going to talk about, so it's, we're in agreement there. So just for those of you that don't know who we are, as my former boss would say, and we are a cousin to affordable housing development. We've been in existence for about forty-seven years, and we actually started out in affordable housing and development and management. We currently own and or manage seven buildings in the Chinatown ID. Similar to what Miguel discussed, we not only consider the housing when we build our buildings, but we also consider how our residents and how our community are going to live with this project. And I think that really underscores kind of the importance of the work that you're going to hear from me, from Miguel, from the other folks that are on this call today. You know, right now, Skipda currently has two projects that are underway. One is under construction, and the other one will be put, is set to close this summer. But it's been about fifteen years since we had developed a new project. Over the years, Skipda has attempted to acquire land in the Chinatown ID and with little success. You know, our two projects now, as well as the one that actually we did about fifteen years ago now, were not acquired on the open market. They were acquired through other methods, whether it be through us being a public development authority or through other forms of working with government to actually acquire this land. And we've put multiple offers on properties over the years. They've lost out for a variety of reasons, you know, from timing to funding to readiness. We hope that this Jumpstart funding will allow us to continue to develop in our neighborhood, where parcels are quickly getting bought out and developed by speculative development. It would not only be advantageous that this funding be for smaller CBOs. Um, it would not only be advantageous that this funding be for smaller CBOs and CDCs, but that it would be more flexible with its eligible eligibility criteria. As we all know, financing and affordable housing development is difficult and highly scrutinized. And I kind of, you know, really um echo what Miguel said about the importance of developing the ground floor commercial and really making that, you know, an important piece of the project and of what we're doing. Um, and, you know, when I think about what, what a lot of this funding funds, it's not that. And that is really important piece of how we wanna develop our projects is to make sure that we develop great housing, with great commercial space, and that we're able to bring in businesses that really do reflect our community and many of them need also those resources as well. Um, so we really hope that this funding helps break down those barriers and allow smaller, you know, less experienced organizations like us to be able to develop on our own and how we would like to be able to develop. I think this phase one capacity billion dollars, as well as the phase two additional developer fee, will allow us to confidently build our capacity within our organization and not kind of build it on a dream and hoping that funding will come through and that we will be able to pay our staff beyond twelve to sixteen months, you know, it'll really um help us to say, you know, we can do this project, we can really build our capacity, and this is something that we can stick with, which is often a question that we have and something that we kind of did as we developed, you know, as we worked towards staffing up to develop the projects that we're currently working on. And I think that is something that is, I really appreciated seeing that in this legislation. I think that it is something that, you know, we think about internally, how, how can we build our capacity to not only um have the staff that we need, but also build kind of the um expertise and the professionalism within our community, within the staff that we have and the ones that we want to build so that we can have folks within our staff that can do this work that look like us, that are, you know, that are capable and that we have, you know, more developers of color and folks that, that have that experience coming through. I do um wanna impress upon the importance of um the dedicated acquisition funding that is in here. I think that, you know, we all know that land is getting snatched up quickly within the Chinatown ID. It takes a great deal of resources within our organization to get to the other, the acquisition funding, and is awesome, us, often subject to funding timelines, which doesn't always align when, for, when, you know, land is for sale. So I think that this would really um help within that. And, you know, it feels like one of the most critical issues in regards to community control of land and really getting that first step. And I do appreciate the um space after acquisition to develop a development plan. I think it was five years, um, and to really, you know, help us, give us the space and time to even compete with the open market that is here in Seattle. So, just to close, I just wanna say that, you know, we at Skipta look forward to working with council and the Office of Housing program and to being a critical partner in this work. And welcome us, welcome to have us at the table anytime we, we'll be there. So, thank you very much.
Well, we will continue to take you up on the opportunity uh to be at that table with you because so many great ideas have been generated from the community directly on how we can make improvements. And uh you and um, and Miguel mentioned the need to make sure that we move quickly for land that is available. We know that that's the experience as well when it comes to the Filipino Community Center. And I'm wondering if I could turn it over to the team uh that is here with us from the Filipino Community Center to talk a little bit about your past experience and some items that you have on the horizon and how this might be helpful. Um, or any additional comments that you'd like to make. And again, just wanna welcome Board Member Rick Politin, um Executive Director Agnes Navarro, and former Representative Velma Valoria and Community Organizer, who came off of mute that day and emphasized the importance of this um policy uh more than a year ago. So, thank you and welcome to the Filipino Community Center uh team here.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Moskata and members of the committee. Uh, my name is Velma Valoria. I'm a former state representative and I'm here representing the Filipino community of Seattle. Um, just wanted to say thank you and um wanted to testify on the council bill one, two, zero, three, four. We call that the Affordable Jump Start Housing Funding Program. It's a new one. It's still a little long, but anyway, is, if, if Skipta is saying they're a small organization, we are a very mini, mini, mini organization. So I wanted to let you know about the um, the experience that we have had. As you know, and Agnes said, that we did have our opening in our uh, of our Filipino community village. We are now ready to work with the afford, uh to, to work on affordable housing for families. Let me tell you our experience. We have a landowner that was ready to sell his piece of land. That landowner offered us the opportunity for first refusal to buy the property. As we applied for funding from the city for land acquisition, we found that the requirement was to have at least three previously built housing project, projects. You know, the Filipino community does not have three housing projects. We only have one that has been recently built, and we did not have the two point three million dollars to buy the land. What was really, really helpful was Councilmember Moskata's um, um, jumpstart uh acquisition um for land funding. And so we um, with this ordinance, I think we will be the first one to use it. And uh within less than a year, we would have funding to buy that piece of property. We have already um put our proposal in front of the um landowner, and we're working to make sure that it comes through. So this piece of legislation will actually allow us to buy that piece of land and uh now allow us to concentrate on making sure that we do build that capacity and that we do have that um, that time to work with our developer to make our plans a reality. So I wanted to say thank you for your um innovation in creating that jumpstart uh program as well as our um, yeah, our need to uh fill, to fulfill our need for this housing project. So, once again, thank you very much, and we're really look, looking forward to have this piece of ordinance passed immediately. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Board Member Politin or Director Agnes Navarro? Go ahead, please go ahead.
Hi, um, I fully support what Agnes Navarro and Velma Valoria just said. Well, good morning, Chairman Teresa Moskata and members of the committee. My name is Rick Politan. I'm a board member of the Filipino community of Seattle and also President of the Board for APE, Asia-Pacific American for Civic Government. Uh, the Filipino, the Filipino community is in dire need for an affordable locust housing for working families. We are not exempt from the increasing homelessness and demand for affordable housing in the area. So, we, we're in full support of this ordinance that you uh here working on. Uh, thank you, uh, members of this committee for making this happen. This will make sure that BIPOC organizations such as the Filipino community of Seattle will be able to participate in building an affordable locust housing for working families. Recently, we were able to successfully build, as like the other uh panelists said, officially opened the uh affordable housing for seniors, the Filipino Village One, which is, by the way, now hundred percent occupied. Um, this showed that our organization could build efficiently and help provide senior housing in the city. An adjacent lot, just like, like what Velma said, was offered to us to be uh for sale. And with this city's help, we will be able to purchase this lot to build an affordable housing for working families. And be, now, at least reach our dream of building uh housing for working families. Um, so, again, thank you for making this happen. And I, we look forward to working with you in making sure that we do expand uh affordable housing in the city of Seattle and making sure that uh CBOs like the Filipino uh community of Seattle can really participate in helping address these dire needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and it was wonderful to see you last week, Board Member Politan, at the Filipino Community Center celebration as well. Uh, Agnes, anything else you'd like to add to Executive Director?
Oh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Teresa Moskata. Um, I just wanted to um make sure that uh we wanna thank you very much for all the help that you've given us and that uh I will let you, I, I, I'm telling everyone that our mission and vision actually um includes uh affordable housing for our community or the people in the Rainier Valley, which is mostly affected uh by the rising cost of um housing in Seattle. The rents are also rising in Seattle, and this will definitely prevent displacements of, of our people. Um, and this will be also a mixed use. It's not only for housing, but it is also for um, it's a multi-generational activities, we, we, uh, you know, for uh, our, our plan is to build another uh on the, on the common, on a common space or the community space, um, a child development uh center and some commercial spaces, um, which we, we can offer um culturally appropriate and uh activities and services. That's about it. Thank you very much, and hopefully this will pass because this will really help us build our next uh project.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Um, and colleagues, I'm gonna turn it to you for any questions or comments, um, both for the panel and for central staff or Office of Housing. Uh, before I do, I wanna again thank the Africa Town Community Center, who could not be with us today because of a flight delay, uh, but want to lift up the words from the folks at Africa Community Housing and Development. Bree Nicolero uh sent us a message that says, I should also share your excitement around the Jump Start um, a community self-determination fund, which pro- will provide critical opportunities to community-led organizations like Africa Community Housing and Development, who are working to grow our development portfolio. As we do not have access to major donors or other resources that mainstream organizations leverage to initiate their community development work, this program would provide a vital investment in our ability to provide high-quality family-sized townhomes and row houses with affordable mortgages priced at fifty percent of the area median income that meet Islamic financing requirements. Our goal is to invest in urban infill model design as a limited equity homeownership cooperative that we can use through King, throughout King County. So I wanna thank them for their support and their uh comments as well. Um, before we turn it over to councilmembers, and I see Councilmember Nelson first up in the queue, Director Winkler Chin, is there anything else you'd like to add to finalize the presentation here?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Moskata. I um have a little bit of challenge with this whole topic uh because I'm feeling a little emotionally tied to it, just a little bit too close um to it. I think uh what you heard from all the organizations here is that um it, it has been a struggle for them to access funding from the Office of Housing. But from that, you hear strong resilience and determination. Um, there is an intentionality into which they've made these decisions to enter this space, which um the affordable housing and the other elements, right? And what does this mean for them as an organization? It's not that they all wanna be affordable housing developers and do all this. That's, that's just a part of their mission and that's how they live out their mission. And so I think the intentionality around that is great. It's um, what I appreciate about uh your, the council's work on this is that it's a path, uh, it leads to a path and a conversation and some strategic uh decisions made within organizations. And that's sometimes a real challenge um to actually resource, and what does that look like? And what this does is help set organizations on a path so then they can access our traditional funds of dollars, which um honestly, the um, some of the other funding sources make it really challenging to do that. I'll just leave it at that. So I will be quiet now and be happy to take questions.
Excellent. Well, we really appreciate it. And uh honestly, the Office of Housing, um, under your stewardship and also the previous um director and team there, uh, really had been great partners with us in developing the policy here and wanna thank uh the Office of Housing team for your partnership. And again, Tracy Ratcliffe for your creative thoughts as well as we sought to change the policy that really was hi- highlighted for us in those community roundtable discussions. Uh, so thank you so much. We're gonna first turn it over to Councilmember Nelson, and then Councilmember Peterson is next. Councilmember Nelson, please go ahead.
Thank you. I am fully in support of this, and I, I really do appreciate you uh bringing this forward and, and for the community advocating for this over the course of years. And, and panelists, you, your presence here really did um, really bring home why this is so important. Um, from Representative Valoria's example of not having enough, um, you know, not having the re- the required number of developments already completed to access money. I mean, getting um cash in the hands of, of people that need it to support community is uh, is a goal of mine when it comes to small businesses, and this is what this is doing. And it sounds, and I, it sounds like this is um effectuating a policy, and this is where I have a question, um, it, that I've been interested in advancing, which is that um it allows for these funds to be used on the ground floor, which will prevent the displacement of neighborhood small businesses. Because often, my understanding has been that the current policy is that the um Office of Housing funding can only be used for the residential units above unless there is a um, uh, a community benefit space, such as in Pride Place, you know, for um the nonprofit uh that was operating on the ground floor, Gen Pride. My point is, is that this is going to help small businesses in the community um who are often uh displaced when storefronts are consolidated, when they're acquired for affordable housing. Um, and it'll also help businesses move in because my understanding is that some of the repairs and the preparation for the space will be possible. So I really appreciate what this is doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Nelson. And um I just wanted to offer the chance, if uh Tracy Ratcliffe uh from Central Staff had anything else that she'd like to add to that, we, I think in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, also did some work with the Office of Housing at the time to try to pair more of the Office of Housing funds with the Equitable Development Initiative Funds to try to do um some of that work as well, to make it possible for there to be a better melding of those dollars, which is, as you've mentioned, uh, a real experience for folks who are either trying to build housing or create community or small business space on the first and second floor. So that issue also came up at that community housing roundtable. Uh, Tracy, did you have anything to add in response to Councilmember Nelson's comment or question, and maybe some of that past work?
Uh, I did. I just wanted to be clear about this. The housing dollars can only be used for the housing and for spaces related to the provision of housing. So, uh, Councilmember Nelson is correct. If there is community space in the bottom of a housing project that's directly tied to providing uh services to the housing residents, that can be used and, and funded with housing dollars. But if you have a separate space that is a, you know, a um for-profit Subway sandwich shop or some other unrelated business or business that's unrelated to, directly related to the housing provision, then housing dollars can't be used for, for that um activity. And that is, in fact, where things like the EDI and private financing, most frequently, uh, have to come in to help uh to, to fund that space for those small businesses. So wanna just be really clear that housing dollars have to be used for housing and for service spaces co- related to the provision of services for the housing residents, but cannot be used for business space, for, for example.
And just to add to that, I, I see Director Winkler Chin's hand up as well. Um, uh, is there any additional elaboration that you can provide to the vision that I share as well? That we want to make sure that there is um a pairing of policies or pairing of funding, braiding those funding sources so that the small businesses, like the ones that we see at Roberto Mastas Plaza, uh, that, you know, women and minority-owned businesses along with childcare on the first and second floors uh and that have housing above it is more possible. I know that we did make some policy changes in the past, and in fact, Jump Start's um economic resilience section of the spend plan does also support the creation of additional small businesses for places like that. And plus, the work that we did with MHA uh to create smaller business fronts as well with some of the uh housing funding that we're receiving there. We wanted to encourage smaller storefrontage. So I'm, I'm thinking of a series of programs and policies and funding that braided together. We wanted to encourage smaller storefrontage, so I'm I'm thinking of a series of programs and policies and funding that braided together can help uh fill out that vision. But Director Winkler Chin, anything else to add to that?
What I was going to say, Councilmember, uh in response to Councilmember uh Nelson's question, is that uh the program that we're talking about today is really about strengthening community-based organizations um to be able to make those decisions that are best for them and their communities, which often involve small business spaces. Uh the funding part of the small businesses, actually, I feel like there is a statement of legislative intent that's being worked on right now that talks about better coordinating, um how we as an office work with other departments that like OPCD, who has the Equitable Development Initiative and the Office of Economic Development, and how do we think about doing that? Because uh even when the community-based organization has the capacity to be able to undertake this project, I think I can say this, we as a city don't necessarily make it easy for them in that um we may want childcare. Well, you need to go speak to this other department that does this. So how do we allow the community-based organization to be uh in the best situation, and how can we, the city, be the best partner with them in doing this work? So the funding piece gets figured out on the small business side better, but I would say the Filipino community of Seattle is probably more looking to the small businesses in their community, and how do we find spaces for them than um maybe some other developers, because of the fact that they're all in community together. Not to put words and expectations on the community, on the Filipino community of Seattle, but just using them as an example.
Excellent. And um I will also say, though, Councilmember Nelson, uh you raised an important point about the ultimate vision. And when we use these funds for land acquisition, and then the community organization gets the chance to actually grab that land, then they, as uh Director Winkler Chin said, through their vision, if their vision includes small businesses, right, then it is making it possible. So while the funding, you know, braids, braiding still needs to happen, you're absolutely right. Acquiring that property makes it possible for those smaller businesses to also move in then.
Right. The funding is freed up for ground floor.
Yes, exactly. Thank you. And thanks for highlighting the slide. I think that was our our slide out of our office in two thousand and nineteen. We know it was delayed by COVID, uh but we're excited about that. Uh Tracy, anything else to add before I go to Councilmember Peterson?
Just briefly, that you are correct. There is a slide that actually we should be getting at the end of June that uh tries to address the question, um actually soon, um uh actually, end of October, that uh gets at this question about coordination of the various parties and their fund sources.
Exciting. Okay, great. Uh thanks for the question. Uh Councilmember Peterson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Muscata. I I definitely support more funding to acquire and preserve low-income housing, especially to help prevent displacement, and this is the best way to do it by empowering uh our local organizations. I wanna acknowledge all the excellent work these community-based organizations here with us today have already done for Seattle and continue to do. Um I do have a couple of questions about the the numbers. Um I think this question might be for uh Tracy Ratscliffe on Central Staff. So the uh how much money are we talking about? Uh big picture, it says thirteen percent of available funds for certain housing activities, but so so could we, eh I don't know if there's a a dollar amount there, or could we look at the twenty twenty-two Jumpstart Spend Plan and estimate what that is?
Yes, it's about fifteen point seven million dollars in twenty twenty-two um that would be available for this program. Um and then, you know, uh I think it's actually about sixteen percent of the housing dollars that are available going forward. And obviously, that amount, the fifteen million, could change depending on the amount of proceeds that come in. Um but this year, we know it's about fifteen point seven million dollars.
Thank you. And in terms of preventing displacement, is that something that will be defined? Um for example, is it with, is it acquiring uh a housing with regulatory agreements that are expiring or project-based section hap contracts that are expiring, or is it just, if it's in a certain zip code, it's just assumed to help prevent displacement?
So I think, looking at the policies and um Director Chin might uh be able to answer this better, but we, I think there is a priority given to uh the acquisition of of occupied buildings. That's one uh thing that might uh give a nod to or prioritize the acquisition of existing uh buildings. Uh I don't know if uh Kelly, you have further uh criteria that might uh support the idea of trying to uh preserve those existing uh affordable?
And if I might as well add to the councilmember's question, um I think it's also a question of belly buttons served, belly buttons housed. So if you think of individuals, and that's always around in healthcare, right, how many, how many people are we talking about? Um and so if if it's uh if you have a response to the question that Tracy framed it in terms of um preservation of units, but also the folks who are experiencing displacement, I think is something that we've worked on a lot through the community preference and affirmative marketing policies. And if you look at the folks who, for example, are in the Filipino Community Center, uh Filipino Community Village, uh the elders there, the eligible folks who came in are the community that's at high risk of displacement from that neighborhood. So um I just wanted to sort of broaden the question um out a little bit to think about individuals, the belly buttons that are going to be housed there, and um and think about um displacement of in those individuals versus maybe the the existing building. Does that make sense, if if I could add to your question in that way?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Muscata. I just was trying to figure out if there were, if the Office of Housing was gonna use criteria. I know one, I know a major concern is for these um housing projects where where all of them are extremely low-income, all the residents there, and and but there's the regulatory agreement is expiring or um a section hap contract, the the owner's choosing not to renew that contract. And and then you've got a hundred percent of the residents at at risk. Um I just didn't know if OH was considering that as criteria.
Any good comments in response to that from the team at the Office of Housing?
We'll try Kelly Larson at the Office of Housing. I think we do look broadly at the definition of displacement. Um we we often are referring to the OPCD work, where they've looked at areas at high risk of displacement. We overlay our investments with the work that OPCD is doing. We're constantly uh staying in touch with them on that. And we're continuing our work at the Office of Housing to decide and analyze investments and what they mean in terms of pre- preventing displacement. Um but I I would say for sure that we would be uh categorizing programs and housing such as uh Councilmember Peterson just described as an anti-displacement investment.
Chair, if I may, a couple more questions. Um yeah, I I'm assuming Office of Housing has a list of projects throughout the city that have hap contracts and and have um uh low-income housing tax or regulatory agreements and and know when those are expiring, so that you can even, you can even point these organizations to those those acquisition opportunities, um so that they don't convert to market rate. Housing and the rents shoot up uh quickly and displace people. Um does Office of Housing have a list of projects that are at risk of of converting to mark, from low-income housing to market rate?
Kelly, I'll answer that. Uh traditionally, we have kept a list of both uh the Lytech projects that are coming up and the um and the section eight contracts. Sometimes the Lytech projects coming up are worth a lot of money, uh but they also have continued regulatory agreements, right, for uh continued use agreements for, uh I think forty years on that. Uh I would say oftentimes, wearing, if I'm using my old hat as somebody who uh was working in this space before, I would always try to keep my section eight, but I'm always looking at those other new development opportunities that would allow me to more fully embrace the uh the community development lens that I would wear, right? So I never would wanna lose section eight in my neighborhood, because it's really, really hard to get back. And at the Office of Housing, we do have in our asset management team tracking for that, but we haven't really had that many opportunities to go after and go to skipda and say, uh would you be interested in buying this property? Um that's a conversation that we need to enter into with our other organizations.
And to to look for these acquisition opportunities out, you know, I can't resist putting a plug in for the legislation that the council passed to identify um naturally occurring affordable housing, that that would be um, those would be good opportunities to to acquire. Had a question about the developer fee. Um uh wanna make sure we're, you know, acquiring as as many units as possible with the 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 resources that we have. And I understood that, I thought the housing levy program, there's a developer fee schedule on the Office of Housing website. For example, it limits developer fees to two point five percent of total development costs for projects costing over twelve million. So is this, the proposal to provide an additional five hundred thousand uh for those developer fees, is is that um do do we need to change that policy for the developer fee schedule, or is this coming from a different authorization? This would come from a different authorization. I guess that's for Central Staff or OH.
Yes, this is uh unique to the specific program for Jumpstart AMP. It's a very narrow uh scope at this stage, and we were, are testing, and we'll see how it can change over time. But as of now, it's organizations that participate in the Jumpstart Capacity and Grant Program that would be eligible for up to five hundred thousand dollars of additional developer fee, which would be negotiated during uh project definition and negotiation phase.
One last.
So that won't apply to every single investment at the Office of Housing. Only these specific projects will be eligible.
Okay.
And also, the housing funding policies, Councilmember, don't include that that developer fee cap. That might be um how OH implements um their uh loan program, but it's not actually something in the housing funding policies that would require a change, just FYI.
Um so in this case, for this program, would there be, I I it's 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 labeled as an acquisition and preservation program, and then there's the developer fee. So is there actual development occurring? Uh are all the, are the units acquired, are they uh required to be renovated, so that there's development, real estate development activity occurring for the fee? Or is the fee just a payment that goes to the organization while they're just acquiring a building? I guess I'm I'm just thinking of developer fee as a term of art in the real, you know, in the real estate finance world, it's it's for building or renovating typically.
Kelly, do you want me to, I'll go for it. I see Kelly nodding. So if we think about this in a linear path, an organization will then work on the capacity building. They've received the capacity building grant and use that money to help them build their capacity. And that could be education, it could be training, it could be really doing some board development, all of that. When you acquire, you might be acquiring land, and you might be acquiring a project, but you have five years to use this time. We want a a development plan for whatever it is that is being bought in five years. So if you are acquiring land, you're gonna have to incur your own internal expenses during that five-year plan, because uh you're gonna have to hire the right set of development team members to do the work, whether it's an architect, engineer, but but you, as an organization, need those funds in order to do the work during that five-year plan. If you are buying a building and preserving it, I would say very rarely do you actually have a building that is pristine and great and lovely, that you're gonna have to go um not do anything with. You are also gonna have to have a five-year plan, and you have that five years to do the work necessary in order to acquire and purchase that as well. Kelly, if I'm incorrect in that, please correct me, cuz I know you.
So Kelly's nodding. For folks who cannot see the full screen, okay. Um, okay, excellent, Councilmember Peterson. And I think actually, uh you know, your questions underscore some, some of the issues that we're trying to address here. We wanna make it possible for these organizations to really acquire the land, to initiate the projects through their vision and not be held up and trying to figure out how to braid all of the funding sources with the various developers at the, you know, the front end. And um and how quickly those properties disappear off the market is very problematic for making sure that we can either do preservation, um building new buildings, or as Councilmember Nelson might mention, building housing on top of the small businesses. So I'm excited about the the quickness in which hopefully this will bring opportunities into the hands of folks who are looking to uh develop new housing and help prevent displacement. Uh Councilmember Herbald, thanks for your patience to wrap us up.
Sure, um really appreciate uh that uh conversation. Was hoping it would answer my question, cuz it was in the in the ballpark there, but not quite. I do have a, I I wanna be specific about the kind of displacement that I'm asking about, rather than defaulting to sort of the broader um uh definition of um displacement that is designed to ensure that uh people in an area can either stay or return. I wanna really focus on those buildings that Councilmember Peterson was talking about. I have um community groups in my district who are really interested in acquiring uh buildings that are um at risk of uh being purchased in the speculative market and um are interested in resources to help them do so. They're not um established uh nonprofit housing developers, but um they're uh they've been working for for several years um to realize this vision for for South Park. And so what is still not clear to me is whether or not this program is expected to help um organizations like this purchase existing affordable housing buildings, or if it's instead focused on uh ac- acquisition of land, as well as, of course, the capacity building piece. Um so or or is it both? Or do we just happen to be talking about mostly about land uh today uh in the in the projects that we talked about in the in the panel? Or is this fun um flexible enough to allow for um these community-based organizations to purchase specific buildings in um in a geographic area that is identified as being at high risk of displacement? And if so, um just wanting to understand, is is the program designed to help these organizations to move cli- quickly, to seize the opportunities they see? Um i- insofar as like, are, is this gonna be like a rolling application process? Um how how will these uh organizations be best poised to take advantage of this new opportunity? Thank you.
Anybody want to take that from Central Staff or Office of Housing? Please go ahead, Director Winkler Chin.
I would say, uh Councilmember Herbald, I think you asked a question of how flexible. It's pretty flexible at this point, right? Um because we are just kind of here laying out a framework from what we've heard. And I think uh you should expect changes in the program over time as it gets implemented and developed. So this is just setting the framework for it. So is it flexible? Yes. And in the case of community organizations, I think that are looking at seizing opportunities to buy buildings, um they need some capacity building, in some sense, to help develop what it is that they want to do. So as I said earlier, I think I mentioned the term intentionality, and it's a path to having a conversation with themselves as to what is the best shape and form by which to do that, which I think is really, really important, because um when you end up working with the Office of Housing, uh we expect you to work with us for eighty-five years and being around for that long. I hate to say it. So Councilmember Muscata had these very, very nice words of the Community Self-Preservation Fund. Um I made the internal joke, it's like the bad marriage fund, because you are um forming this working relationship, and it has to be with some intentionality. The acquiring of projects quickly, so so this may, you have to go slow before you can go fast, uh is which a mentor told me, because you have to really understand what you're doing. Now, if there's opportunities that pop up, we are happy talking with organizations about acquiring those in some way. And that is okay. We are fine doing that, because in this point where we haven't gotten the program set up yet quite, and we're not quite there, we need to seize those opportunities. Um I think you asked a question of whether it's rolling funds. The loan program, we envision being a rolling fund, much as our current Acquisition and Preservation Fund is. But I think that the uh capacity building will probably be through a notification of funding availability that's issued later on about, okay, who wants to access these funds and be willing to do it with this pot of money at this time? But um real estate doesn't fall on this nice schedule of waiting around for the city to issue our NOFA. So uh the the AMP, the acquisition funds will have to be rolling. That's that's our current envisioning of it.
And so um just to restate what I thought I heard you say, um when, what I thought I heard you, what I thought you meant when I heard you say that, yes, the what I thought you meant when I heard you say that yes, the fund is flexible. You are saying it is flexible to accommodate both acquisition of property as well as acquisition of buildings.
We are acquiring, period. Just acquiring.
Yes.
Yes.
I think the yes.
Yes, because it's acquisition and preservation. Yeah.
Yeah. I I appreciate your question, Councilmember uh Herbert and and uh to also do a trailer to Councilmember Peterson's question as well. I think we too are interested in the building concept as well because there are belly buttons and families in those units. One of the uh community partners that was part of the Community Roundtable was the Duomish Valley Affordable Housing Coalition. I know you've spent a lot of time working with them. They also came off of mute and Velma and anybody else on the line that day, feel free. I know Miguel, you came off of mute that day. Folks from Africa Town came off of mute to say, we need this um fund. We need to make sure that we have greater flexibility. And we need to remove these requirements, these uh requirements for you to either have X number of years or X number of experience or buildings. And um so I think that they very much are interested in this concept as well, but I will again underscore what I think we've all been lifting up here that this is one avenue of funding. And so we need to make sure to keep lifting this up when we think about the levy renewal policies. When we think about the notice of intent to sell changes that we're planning to make so that there is a pot of funding for multifamily structures that come on the market. So I think we'll we'll continue to infuse this concept that you all have brought up today in all of these other funding sources so that we continue to have more funding overall. Because it can't just be done through this fund alone. And community colleagues, is there anything else that you'd like to add to any of the questions that you've heard today? Or um the issues that have been raised before we close us out? Yeah, please go ahead.
This is Velma from the Filipino community. I just wanted to add the whole issue of capacity building is really going to help us because it's going to determine as um the discussion was, it's going to determine whether, like you said, whether we will have the capacity to to build the childcare center or and or and the small business units that will be on the first floor. So those are the things that we are also looking at. And I wanted to just let you know that this capacity building fund and the whole package, you know, will really be helpful to all of us.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Any additional comments? Okay, colleagues, I really appreciate uh all of the participation in this topic here today. And again, thanks to the Office of Housing for your work in thinking through the policy changes with us along with community, Aaron House and Tracy Staff. Just to highlight the four, I think, really essential things that this legislation would do. It provides specific eligibility criteria tailored to these smaller community-based organizations that are fighting displacement have historically been excluded from public policy and funding sources and providing them an avenue. It provides a permanent funding source as opposed to a revolving fund that has to be paid back fairly quickly and allows the city to grant longer-term funding to organizations. As you've heard, work over five years to make sure that there is truly a partnership with O H. The permanent nature of this funding allows for a more flexible timeline so that organizations can secure the land and work on developing it through that community vision without having to partner necessarily with an outside organization that's not part of their vision. And you know, we have some good partners. I know that there's been great partners with El Centro and the Filipino Community Center and SKPTA and Africa Town. And there's many um developments that we've jointly been at the ribbon cutting to celebrate lately. But having more self-determination is always something that is good and something that we should work to ensure that our public policies promote. And the capacity building that this fund could uh lead to, building technical assistance, acquiring skills, helping the affordable housing element of the nonprofit organization become more core to what they do to create that skill set among community organizations is a really good thing, especially as more community organizations are seeking to provide housing to their community that they either provide meals to right now, childcare, educational programs, et cetera. They want to also be in the place where they can offer housing. So this is really exciting that so much advocacy has gone into elevating this issue. And now we have leaders within the Office of Housing that can help us realize this vision and elected to uh I am hopeful are supportive of this. So thanks again for all of your work today and for highlighting that. We spent quite a bit of time on this, but wanted to make sure that we got into these details and uh look forward to if there's no objection. Uh I look forward to having a potential vote on this today. Colleagues, I move the committee recommend passage of Council Bill one two zero three four three. Thank you. Is there any comments or questions? Please go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Muscata. Yeah, I appreciate your work on this and I I um support the organizations here today and and the the need to do this. I I uh your your comments at the end are really important to me in terms of restating the the values and the visions of this. I I think um this was a lot for us to digest so quickly. I know you've been with it for, you know, a- almost a year, but I I this is the first time that I have been seeing this. I fortunately, we were able to, my staff and I were able to to jump on this and and ask questions. And thank you for the uh answers we received today. I think there's still some stuff that sounds like it needs to be worked out, but with with it being fifteen million is a is a is a doable amount and appreciate you you stating the vision. And uh so I want to be supportive. I just it does it does feel rushed, but I think I'm ready.
Okay, well, thank you. And I know that our staff have had a chance to connect directly to, but appreciate that that this is, you know, very much in line with the vision of the Jumpstart Spend Plan ordinance that we discussed. And so that's already dedicated funding. I know that the community has been working on this for a long time and Office of Housing and Tracy and as well. So I appreciate that. That we are kind of bringing together multiple conversations to consolidate the proposal in front of us today to really fulfill the opportunity to create that flexibility. But I'm thankful for your support and happy to, of course, spend additional time answering any questions, but really appreciate your support today. Any additional comments? Okay. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill one two zero three four three?
Councilmember Herbert.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Madam Chair Muscata.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is a five in favor, none opposed.
Excellent. Thank you. Yay, community. You're on the line to see a unanimous passage. So thanks for all of your work and uh we may have some additional questions or maybe examples that council members would like to see flushed out a little bit. So we may be calling you again to hear more about some of the projects that you've worked on or projects that are in the pipeline, um so we can flush this out. But my excitement made me forget to note that the motion carried. The motion carries and the committee recommendation that the bill pass will be sent to the June twenty first Seattle City Council meeting for a final vote. So thanks so much. I think we um we have about twenty thirty minutes left here and I'm going to see if we can get through the next two agenda items. I'm wondering if um Madam Clerk, if you could read into the record, I agenda item number three. And as we do so, I may ask our colleagues here on the Finance and Housing Committee just to confirm if they have any additional flexibility to go till noon today. If not, that's okay. Just let me know. Um Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record item number three?
Agenda item number three, three, Council Bill one two zero three four zero, an ordinance relating to the Department Department of Finance and Administrative Services for briefing discussion and possible vote.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are excited to have with us um Jared Green from for joint interest in this. And I'll turn it over to Calvin for walking us through the presentation before we get to our guests.
Thank you, councilmembers. Uh I just recently had my audio come back on, so I think some of the other attendees might have that as well, but I I see heads nodding, so I think we're all ready to go. Uh I'm Calvin Chow with Council Central Staff. Um before I turn it over to the executive staff, I'll just say briefly that this lease really is a pretty simple lease. It makes use of space below the I ninety Airport Way interchange that supports SDOT's field operations. There are no s- specific transportation projects or right-of-way improvements occurring at the property. So this is really in support of basic operations. With that, I'll turn it over to the executive. They have a very thorough presentation for you.
Great, thank you. And before you do, um just because of the audio issue, it sounds like um Seattle Channel cut out for the viewing audience. We are on agenda item number three. Council Bill one two zero three four zero. Uh and I want to thank my colleagues here on Finance and Housing who have indicated that they are able to stay until noon today. So we will get through these next two items as um as planned. Please go ahead. Uh thanks for being here, Director. Who's going first? Gerald, are you up first?
Yes.
Gerard, excuse me, Mr. Green, please go ahead.
Okay, just a sec.
Gerard, if you like, I have the presentation open and can can put it up as well. Oh, you've got it.
Yes, so thank you. Um so uh good morning, um Chair Muscata and uh councilmembers.
I just want to, I'll let you know, uh we can see your your uh desktop, but um the presentation was not up. Which is very well organized, I must say. I I need to
I have the presentation available, so if you would like to just speak to it, I can I can run the presentation for you.
Thank you. Okay, can you guys see that?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Okay, so good morning, um uh Chair Muscata and uh com- uh committee members. Really appreciate this opportunity to talk a little bit about a a yard space that is becoming more and more valuable and kind of critical to as Calvin said, our operations um here at SDOT. And so here's a little bit, this slide talks a little bit about the history. We have been using the this yard space roughly since two thousand seventeen. At the time this this property um kind of became available, we were actively working with FAS to locate a yard space. Because we'd been uh recently told by um our Sound Transit partners and FAS that we would need to vacate a space that we had been leasing for several years. And so we were already kind of looking for a space and desperately trying to find a space that was uh logistically located close to the downtown core and close to um our largest operations facility, which is Charles Street. So it really, it actually really worked out um uh better than we thought at the time. And so, you know, that's second bullet, you know, WISDOT and SDOT leadership at the time were talking about a way to activate this space. And they basically said, does SDOT have any use for this space? And the challenge is is a a large enough space to to move and circulate long and large equipment. So that was the challenge. And this space actually um had those dimensions that we needed. Even though we needed to, you know, put up a fence and make the the space uh somewhat more secure, realizing that we would have valuable equipment and some materials stored there. And so, yeah, this this slide just kind of reiterates the the use um of the yard space. It also houses our um snow, snow and ice uh fighting equipment and a lot of signage and kind of overflow signage that our uh uh operations paving crews, asphalt and concrete um also utilize. This is just kind of like an aerial of the space, uh that the actual spaces in blue designated in blue. It's kind of like that triangle. And we have, it's fully fenced now. And and we did do some some minor um development. Mainly, we added some aggregate, um some crushed rock and compacted it. Uh and that's mainly, uh we wanted to make sure that anything we added was uh pervious, so we didn't um trigger any drainage needs. And also uh just makes the yard a lot more usable during the winter rainy months. We don't have equipment and people getting stuck because it it does get uh pretty saturated in that area. And then over to the right and designated in red, that's our current space that uh not only SDOT but also FAS. And yeah, mainly those NSPU actually share that yard space that we lease from FAS uh or WISDOT through FAS. And now I'm going to turn it over to Karen Grun with um FAS uh Real Estate Services to finish out the uh PowerPoint. And if there's time, we'll both be available for questions.
Thank you, Gerard, and good morning, Chair Muscata. Good morning, uh council members, committee members. FAS's role here is to act as the leasing agent for SDOT. And the lease agreement, just briefly, that's before the committee this morning allows SDOT to use the space as Gerard said, for operational purposes. The square foot is considerable. It's a large space, sixty-three thousand five hundred forty-four square feet. We've negotiated an initial term of the lease for six years that runs from April first, twenty seventeen, when SDOT first started occupying the space to uh March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And we've also negotiated two five-year extensions. Those would be at SDOT's uh option. The agreement calls for the Washington State Department of Transportation to waive rent from that initial date of April first, twenty seventeen, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty. And the rental amount on a monthly basis is fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars. That starts January first, twenty twenty-one. And there's an option for Washington State Department of Transportation to increase that amount annually by two percent. On the next slide, you'll see the lease terms depicted in a grid form. That also shows the annual expense to SDOT uh for the lease. And then note that that waiver of rent from April first through uh uh the entire year of twenty twenty, that's in recognition for the city's investment in cleaning up the property when SDOT first started using it. Next slide, we're here before the council be- because the director of FAS has the signing authority for a lease of this nature. With this size of property, over eighteen thousand square feet for yard space, and with this duration of the initial term at six years, we require council authorization for the director to be able to sign this lease on behalf of SDOT. And we're happy to partner with SDOT on this and um answer any questions that the committee has this morning for us. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Um and I'm going to turn it over to our colleagues to see if there's any comments or questions. Okay, I'm seeing none from the Chair of Transportation. Appreciate um that you have been working on this for some time. Any additional questions over here? Seeing none. Anything else you'd like to add, Cal?
Nope, nothing for me.
Okay. I appreciate uh you bringing this to us. And I think without any additional questions, I move the committee recommends passage of Council Bill one two zero three four zero. It's been moved in second. And are there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, um I'm going to go ahead and call the roll. Vice Chair Herbert.
Yes.
Uh Councilwoman Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Aye. Uh Councilwoman Muscata, aye. Madam Clerk, that's five in support of the legislation. The motion carries and the committee recommendation that the bill pass will be sent to the June twenty first Seattle City Council meeting for a final vote. Thanks so much, uh Cal and the team at SDOT and F S FAS for your presentation here today. Okay, let's move on to our last agenda item. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number four into the record?
Agenda item number four, Council Bill one two zero three three eight, an ordinance relating to grant funds from the non-city sources for briefing discussion and possible vote.
Wonderful. Thank you. Agenda item number four is also an item that dovetails with um our vice chair's committee. Uh Vice Chair Herbert does have oversight over human services. So I want to thank you for your joint interest in this as well. This legislation authorizes the Human Service Department to accept six grants from the state and federal agencies totaling three million two hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and appropriates the budget authority that is tied to the grant agreements. I want to thank Acting Director Tanya Kim and Joseph Cap- Casper ski from the Human Services Department for joining us to walk through the grants, acceptance requests, and the programs that will be supported by these non-city funds. And welcome uh Director Kim and And welcome, Director Kim and Joseph.
Thank you. And so Kevin is going to pull up our presentation, Tanya Kim, Acting Director for Human Services Department.
And Joseph Kasperski for Chief Financial Officer for the Human Services Department.
You had it so close. Okay, thank you, Chair Mosqueta, Vice Chair Herbold and committee members for the opportunity to present on the timely legislation that allows HSD, as you said, to accept grants from non-city sources. And I think this will be relatively brief, so thank you for sticking around for us. Before we begin, I want to acknowledge that today, June is a very busy month. And today is Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Seattle, as proclaimed by the mayor, as well as you, Seattle City Council. And so, thank you. Elder abuse, neglect, and financial exploitation are growing problems in our community, unfortunately. And HSD's Aging and Disability Services Division provides specific supports for Seattle King County residents aged sixty and older who are abused, neglected, and are exploited by someone they trust. And you'll see a connection with some of our funding for this body of work. And we work closely with medics, firefighters, police, and the county prosecuting attorney's office to improve health outcomes for vulnerable adults. And so I just wanted to, before we dive into the mechanics, kind of ground us in the work that we do and the impacts that these types of funds provide for us. So thank you, councilmembers, for increasing awareness of elder abuse issues in our community and working toward ensuring that all people are treated with respect and dignity regardless of age or ability. And so with that, next slide, please. We're going to provide an overview of the purpose of this ordinance for the viewing public, highlight the scope of grant funding this legislation will provide the city, and then share a list of the grants to the city of Seattle affected by the legislation. And right now, Joe is going to walk us through in a little bit more detail, so.
Thank you, Director Kim. Good morning, everyone. HSD has been awarded three point two million dollars in state and federal grants in addition to those already included in the fiscal year twenty-two budget. This ordinance is being requested for HSD to expand and continue programs that will benefit older adults and individuals living with HIV AIDS. The specific areas are illustrated on the following slide. Next slide, please. We have received six grants focusing on five areas, which will allow the department to increase housing services for people living with HIV AIDS, expand access for COVID response programs for older adults, continue senior care management and elder abuse intervention programs, provide eligible senior veterans the opportunity to receive home and community-based services, and lastly, support prime victim assistance and victim service programs for senior adults, which aligns with today's observation of Elder Abuse Awareness Day, as mentioned earlier by Director Kim. Next slide, please. Shown here are the specific grants awarded to the city and are the basis for this request. I would like to highlight the three, two point two million dollars in funding we received for housing for opportunities for persons with HIV AIDS. This grant is a three-year grant that will provide funding to three BIPOC-led agencies to focus on stable housing and positive health outcomes. Additionally, as well as advancing equity, which may serve as a national model in this area, area, excuse me. The remaining grants are specific to older adults in the community and continues funding for programs such as senior nutrition, social isolation, and other support. With that, I'd like to conclude our presentation. We welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, are there any additional questions? Any comments? Yes, great. Councilmember Herbold, Vice Chair and Chair of Human Services, please go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to inquire about the staffing capacity at HSD to complete the work required for these grants. Wondering if you could speak a little to that. Also, I'm interested in the Crime Victim Services Fund. If you could say just a little bit more about how the Victims Services Fund will be used, how people will access it, what it will pay for. And then lastly, interested in knowing a little bit more about the Nutrition and Support Services Funds, what specific services will it pay for and for what population? Thank you.
Director Kim, I'll take my first review of the questions. Thank you, councilmember, for those questions. Currently, HSD does have the sufficient staffing for these programs. Most of these programs, of course, have our ongoing funding programs and are contracted out. So I am not anticipating any staffing challenges with the execution of these programs. As far as the second question, I didn't quite fully hear.
The Victim Services Fund? Just wanting to know a little bit, yeah. How 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 you anticipate it will, it'll work, how people will access it, what it will pay for?
It will be executed with our current staff on board. It's creating a, providing, expanding cognitive capacity assessment services to the eligible recipients of the funding. And it was going to be basically managed by our existing case managers as another avenue.
More eligible recipients, I think is what I'm trying to get at.
It's it's related to, I could see that it's related to our ADS Elder Abuse Program. And so we can get you some follow-up information on the specifics. It looks like it is in terms of the federal funding through Commerce, which is adding to the ADS Elder Abuse Team. So as Joe mentioned, the Cognitive Capacity Evaluations, Financial Management Services, the Victim Services Fund will be available to the ADS Elder Abuse Case Managers. But we can provide additional information as well.
So folks at HSD who are working with victims of elder abuse will be able to access those funds. And again, yeah, it would be helpful to know a little bit more about what the funds are intended to pay for.
Absolutely. It it looks like they're beyond what we just shared. They're funds for providing the Cognitive Capacity Assessment Services to fill the, to identify what the gaps are and build out the ability for a King County multidisciplinary team to collectively respond to the victim's situation and needs. But if there's more specifics from the team, I can certainly circle back with with the committee.
Thank you, yeah. I I didn't understand that. So I would I would definitely appreciate an opportunity to learn to learn more. Thank you. And then lastly, just a little bit more detail about the funding for the Nutrition and Support Services.
This will be one-year funding for the Senior Nutrition. It's one point three million dollars for the Senior Nutrition, a hundred thousand to expand information assistance, thirty-five thousand developed Senior Farmer's Market Nutrition Program voucher application access, fifty fifty thousand for Transit Fair subsidy program, a hundred and fifty thousand for elder abuse case management. It's an six hundred and twenty thousand for HSD ADS to manage these contracts and for the data analysis system. This is also providing funding to address social isolation, which is broken down into fifty-five thousand for caregiver counseling, twenty thousand dollars to replicate the pilot project, which aims at delaying memory loss or among through walking and reminiscing, excuse me, in Seattle's historically black neighborhoods. A hundred thousand to continue digital skills coaching and eighty thousand dollars for this interdisciplinary evidence-based capable program, which is really just a program designed to enhance older American, our older adults' ability to age in place.
And and I know that food is kind of top of mind for a lot of folks in funding for food. So just underscoring that it's the Senior Nutrition and the Senior Farmer Market Nutrition Program vouchers.
Thank you, Director Kim. And is that funding this this five, five hundred and sixteen thousand? Is this accounted for in the recent sigh response regarding food funding and inquiring what other resources we're expected to get from other jurisdictions?
Oh, that's a good question. I will need to.
We're getting together on Friday, you can follow up then.
I I don't want to misspeak, and so definitely can do that.
All right, super, thank you so much.
Councilmember Herbold, I I too have some questions along the same lines. I'm happy to follow up with the chair or with you later after a conversation on Friday. I see Amy Gores on the line as well. You know, part of my questions that I've been having over the last six to eight months since we passed our budget is when other jurisdictional funding comes in, either through the county from past year dollars, the state from their state legislative budget that was very much an investment in human services as well, or from additional federal dollars. If those dollars can help offset some of the funding that we provided in our twenty twenty-two budget, that would be great. Not to say that there's going to be less dollars, but if they're able to supplant where existing general fund is being used, that would be helpful to know, especially given the budget situation that we're facing. And I know we're all interested in utilizing every dollar available that might be non-general fund related. So perhaps Councilmember Herbold, I can follow up with you as well later this week and with the department about how that could help offset some of the existing revenue sources. Amy, anything to add to that? I see a nodding, just appreciate.
No, I'm just taking notes to make sure that we follow up on that. But happy to do that this week.
Wonderful, thank you. And Councilmember Herbold, you know this area much better than I. But I understand that, for example, in housing, the city budget allocated five point one million dollars for food assistance, excuse me. And in our budget from last year, we allocated about five point one million for food assistance, largely because the state legislature hadn't yet had a chance to convene. Earlier this year, they did. They provided a historic amount of investments in food assistance services. So as we think about where our city dollars are going, if there is the opportunity to redirect some of those, that would be good. But just want to ensure that we underscore this isn't, that it has to be keeping the programs whole and helping to provide any lift of existing holds on any city dollars. Okay, any additional comments or questions? Thank you for the presentation, Director Kim and Joseph and Amy Gores as well. Hearing no additional comments or questions, I move the committee recommends passage of Council Bill one two zero three three eight. Is there a second? Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any additional comments or questions? Okay, wonderful. We'll look forward to continuing to get the information from the subsequent conversations with central staff and the department. Madam Clerk, could you please call the role on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Madam Chair Mosqueta.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is five in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much. The motion carries and the committee recommendation that the bill pass will be sent to the full Seattle City Council meeting for a final vote. But colleagues, I was remiss earlier in saying that all of the items that we have passed today would be on the June twenty-first meeting. I actually am excused on June twenty-first for our full council meeting. I'll be at the Association of Washington Cities meeting. So my hope is that this can all go to the June twenty-eighth meeting. Again, June twenty-eighth will be when this item is taken up. And before we conclude our meeting here today, Madam Clerk, I'm wondering if we have any guidance from the clerk's office about whether or not we need to correct for the record that items one and two will all, excuse me, items one, two, and three will also be heard on the June twenty-eighth meeting. Okay, and Amelia, or anybody from the clerk's office, feel free to come off mute and let us know. Otherwise, I will just make a statement. All of the items from today's Finance and Housing Committee meeting for today, the date of June fifteenth, all of the items will be included on the June twenty-eighth meeting. Hearing no objection, the legislation passed with a recommendation today will be sent to the June twenty-eighth Seattle City Council full meeting. Hearing no objection, the legislation today is going to be heard on the June twenty-eighth full council meeting. Thank you so much. And then our next meeting, colleagues, will be in July. I, however, am going to not be here because it is my birthday on the Fourth of July. So we're going to cancel the July sixth meeting. I don't think that we have anything pressing, and folks might be on holiday still. So we're going to cancel the July sixth meeting and then have our next meeting on July twentieth. All right, we'll get in touch with you about the agenda items to come. With that, have a great rest of June, and we'll see you in about a month. Take care, everyone. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.